Good afternoon and welcome to the special joint meeting between the Gates County Board of Education and the Gates County Board of Commissioners. I am Dr. Anthony Riddick, Chair of the Board of Commissioners, and I call this meeting to order. I will now turn it over to Mr. Felton, Chairperson of the Board of Education, to call his board to order.
Do you want to have a table motion?
I have a motion.
Start it up. We have a motion in a second. If we go, we go into session. Mr. Byron, how do you do?
Yes.
And Mr. Chief, that's Mr. Jones.
Yes.
We are here for the session.
Thank you. I would recognize Superintendent Dr. Williams. And please speak into the microphone so that the audience and the people watching.
You can take that off the stand.
You can take it off the stand. You can take it off the stand and pass it around if you like. No, to take the microphone off. There you go.
Can I stand with you?
Yes, you may.
Mother Mayor.
I want to follow. I'm going to have to get Mr. Jones to hold it for me.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I just want to be very, very clear with how I articulate what I want to say. But good afternoon Commissioners, Board of Education, and Gates County citizens. I appreciate the opportunity to share with both boards and the citizens of the county the status of the community center, the director, and to provide information to assist in making decisions as we move forward. First, I would like to share that we have appointed Ms. Bobby White as the interim Director of the Community Center. Ms. White is the former Director of the Parks and Recreation at Lesbos City Pastoral Tank Parks and Recreation. Ms. White has a degree in Recreation Administration from UNC Chapel Hill and has a vast array of experience in the field. In April of this year, upon notification of the retirement of Ms. Lulu Yor, I recommended to the Board of Education that I speak to the county for input in hiring a new Community Center Director. The Board responded for me to contact Dr. Anthony Riddick. With that discussion came a review of the documentation and how the Community Center came to be a shared entity. Number one, the county is the owner of the Community Center. The Gates County Recreation Program, through the collaboration of both the county and the Board of Education, began in 1977. At that time, a federal grant was secured to build the Community Center in the middle of the county. The Board of Education sold the three acres of land needed for the new facility to the county for $10. During the ensuing years, the Board of Education operated and expanded the Community Center and Recreation Program, and by 1997, the Community Center made available seven gymnasiums, two baseball fields, and two softball fields to the community on almost a year-round basis. In 1997, an application for a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Grant, commonly called the Part of Grant, was submitted through the collaborative efforts of the county and the Board of Education. The grant application was submitted in hopes to expand the range of facilities available to the community on a centralized site that was partially owned by the county and partially owned by the Board of Education. The application for the Part of Grant was approved in 1997, resulting in the Part of Grant Agreement between Gates County and the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Authority. In 1997, the county did not own the required land to build all the facilities detailed in the Part of Agreement. The Part of Agreement stated that the project was to be completed during the period from June 1, 1997, to December 31, 1999. The Part of Agreement requires that the county maintain and manage the Part of Projects for public recreation used for a minimum period of 25 years after project completion. This period will end on December 31, 2024. Two agreements between the county and Board of Education were then made. Number one, the Board of Education and the county agreed that the Board of Education would assume all maintenance and operating responsibilities for the project site as provided in a joint use agreement signed by the county and Board of Education on February 3, 1997, and also February 11, 1997. Number two, the parties also entered into a second agreement by which the county designated the Board of Education as the operator and responsible party for recreation and parks programming effective February 4, 1997. These two agreements are separate from and not required as part of the Part of Agreement. With all that being said, the purpose of this meeting is for the county and the Board of Education to engage in conversation regarding the status of the Community Center moving forward. The Part of Agreement must be followed until December of the year 2024. However, the two additional agreements are not tied to a specific timeframe and are not required by the Part of Grant and can be adjusted at any time with the agreement of both parties. As a reminder, this discussion has come about now due to the need to hire a Community Center Director, the fact that the county owns and the Board of Education maintains and operates the Community Center, and the fact that the new director would be over the Community Center after the Part of Agreement is fulfilled. And just one additional point, and I talked with Ms. Bobby White, and I don't know if this is factual, but I do know from my superintendent colleagues that Gates County is the only county in North Carolina where the Board of Education and not the county maintains and operates a Community Center. So that's kind of an origin with brevity here of where we were, where we're at, and what we would like to see going forward. So without further ado, Mr. Felton and Dr. Riddick.
Microphone, please.
Nobody wants the mic.
Well, again, welcome to the Board of Education. You did a good job, Dr. Williams, in giving us the background. We are here to discuss the future of the Gates County Community Center. We were approached as a board, I was as the chair, about the transition, if we could agree, from the Board of Education operating the Community Center to the county operating the Community Center. Before us is a joint use agreement. I think everyone might have, should have a copy. A copy was put into the board packet for the Commissioners. I don't know whether each one of you have a copy of that joint use agreement? You do? Okay.
I have a question. Of the information that I have, I have a plat of the 1977 plat, of which is three acres. As you can see, it's a rectangular shape plat. Okay, I also have a drawing that was submitted with the grant, the second grant, okay, to build the additional fields and things like that. And as you can see, it's not rectangular. The red circle part is what is included in it. My question is, it appears to me there is some overlay of Gates County's school layout, and is this the true plat or is this the plat name? Is this the plat name? Because this plat and that plat don't agree. So that's my question to the Board of Commissioners.
We're not, we don't have the plat in front of us at this time. But according to the rectangular part, does it just encompass the gym area? Can you, can you speak to that?
And the tennis courts.
You can have a mic.
I'm sure a tennis court's in that ball field behind the two.
It should include the ball field. It should include a couple of the ball fields that were done as part of the grant, the new baseball field, and the new softball field. It should be included in that.
I mean, do you have, measurement-wise, do you, on the rectangle, do you have a length, just a length on there?
On what was submitted for the grant from the Parks and Recreation, there is no footage on this. It just shows what would be done and what will be there. If you include the rectangular part, it looks like to me part of the football field would be part of that three acre if you're looking at a rectangular standpoint. Plus the restrooms that are here that are not included in this plat that was sent to the Recreation.
So it looks like, now that you're holding it a little closer, it looks like that the red area is marked over the plat?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see that on the, on that originally.
But this is the plat. I got one, but this is the plat's recorded in the clerk's office, I mean, in the registered deeds office. So that is a question that I've asked. I think that Mr. Tody did a survey of the Community Center and also the Gates County High School when the gymnasium was built. Is that not correct, Dr. Williams? He did. So we would, I would think that'd be a question that would need to be asked by the person who surveyed the land.
But I don't, it looks like neither one of us can answer that question. So that would be something that would need to be contingent upon any decision that we made that, that should be resolved first, unless, you know, maybe get that, that question answered before we sign a document. But we might still, Madam Chair, be able to go forward with an agreement of what we have before us.
I, I think we can. We'd have to clarify, we don't have that plat, we don't have the information that you have. That's something that we would look into. But the agreement, we could agree to agree based on the outcome of that plat. Mr. Felton?
I'm getting, I'm taking a picture of this.
We were saying that we don't have the information or the plat that Mr. Byron just spoke of, and Commissioner Owens was saying that we could go forward contingent on the outcome of what we see at that plat as far as the agreement itself.
I think we can discuss things in generalities and come to an agreement on how we think things should operate and then work out the fine details when we think that what defines anything as well.
Okay, I agree with that.
As a matter of fact.
And to even address that, the terminology on the last page of the document at the very top says that we made, the date that we signed the agreement may not be the same date anyway.
It says it becomes effective on the signature of the, of the latter is the effective date. Whoever signs last becomes the effective date. So we wouldn't have to meet again and have a signature date that matched.
And that's one of the focuses of this meeting because it is, to be simply, it is what it is. We either, it's a binary choice. You either, we either want to agree to, to transition or not. And that's, that's the question today. Define details, which is something that we didn't have, and you just brought to our attention, has to be worked out. But this, this meeting is to go through, do we want to transition the operation of the Community Center or not?
I would want to see what the Commissioners can do with what the pros and cons, what the pros are and the cons are for you.
Okay, we can do that. Do you want to do that now or you want to go through? Because I don't think the public knows what's in this agreement. We could go and we could read that.
I guess my problem is, I don't really understand what your vision is.
Okay.
I don't see how we can come to an agreement if we don't know what you're thinking and you don't know what we are thinking.
Okay.
That's my problem, my two cents.
All right, that's fine, that's fine. Let me start, and then I'll ask each one of the Commissioners to chime in. I won't try to take up too much time. But when we were approached, or I was approached, about the idea or the vision of the Community Center transitioning from operating under the auspices of the school system to the community, my position then was that it would enhance the programming for all citizens. Not being disparaging on what anybody else had done in the past, but right now, it's an arm of the school system. They're, the, the, it's, it's a community center. But when you look at the program and operation, it operates as an arm, really, of the school system. There's nothing wrong with that except that we don't have programming for all the citizens in the, in the county, which would be an enhancement of all ages, all citizens, and the program and the structure that would, that would lend itself to the community as well as the school system. The pro, for, I'm concerned is we're taking nothing from the school system. They would still have priority over all the, you know, whatever you have, the ball fields, the tennis courts, whatever you're doing, it's going to be prioritized because that's what you use. But what the enhancement would be was additional programming and focus on all the citizens who actually should have programming and focus on what their needs are. So the pro for me is, you keep what you have, but then we get something in return as far as programming.
Exactly, and I concur with you on that. Because I'm so nosy and always have to go back and check when I heard both you and our Chairman speak about our underrepresented seniors. I don't have any problem that they are currently probably underrepresented. But if you think back to when that grant was written and the philosophy behind that grant, it was not for senior citizens 25 years ago. It was for exactly how it has been used in the past years. I'm not saying we don't need to change, that our vision is not a need to include. But I did want to share with people today that because I'm so nosy, I went back and got some figures from the Community Center on found the services they don't render into seniors. And there are 21 seniors who regularly use the business room. Prior to 2019, 34 seniors participated in the Senior Olympics in 124 different categories. The center is the original host for the Senior Olympics, for the horseshoes and shuffleboard games. Prior to 2019, well, 2019 Thanksgiving, they had 80 seniors that they had for lunch. They delivered food, and that was a community affair with many people participating in it. Last year during COVID, they continued to send out food. They had a drive-through Thanksgiving and served 84 and 18, 18 they took them. But the important thing is, and I think we need to realize that and give some credit where it is due, the Community Center is in partnership with the Audubon Commission. The center facilitates the delivery of 640 meals to a person's house during the month, and they have 635 meals that people come and pick up. Now, prior to COVID, the Community Center was used in the morning from 9:00 to 1:00. I'm not saying they have the best programming, so please don't think that's what I'm doing. I just hang away after the first meetings feeling like, well, gosh, we're not doing anything for our senior citizens. And I knew they were because I had grandkids that were programs out there. And in the mornings, I would always see multiple senior citizens out there. This program has not started back up full swing because Audubon Commission is not doing van pickups yet. It's a partnership. So that's just my little two cents, and you know, God knows I have those two cents all the time. But the other two things that I think most people are not aware of, and I am aware of it because as a senior I used it, there is a facilitator out there for the ship program and the MIPPA program. Both of those programs serve seniors. One of them helps seniors decide what medical insurance we need best. And the other one is one that helps our citizens decide and select the prescriptions that are best for them. And I just briefly looked at this form that I was given because I really didn't understand what it was saying. But it had goals. And anyway, we were just at the 1% goal, but that's what they had set. And last year during the MIPPA program, they had saved the county, to the best of my knowledge, $7,495. So all I'm saying is, yes, we need to provide services for every one of our people out there. But I don't think that we'll be starting from the ground floor. I think we have things we can build on. So that's just, I, I just wanted to get that in as best we could. Because I think, and, and this week I got Ms. White's community service thing. I don't know if y'all get that.
We do.
I was really excited to see all the things that were listed on there. But I just, I just felt like you needed to know. If you did not know that there were seniors that went out there at 9:00 and stayed till 1:00, did the gardening, the high gardening bits, did the walking, did the exercising, and played game boards, was it the best in the world? No, because there's always room for a clue. But I just wanted that to be noted, that we are not starting from the bottom. Whoever has the vision, the vision I think is probably to enhance. And while I'm at the fore, and I'll do this real quickly. Dr. Williams has said, and we know that he is the only, the only superintendent that has this, thanks for the Recreation Center. My question is, of those other schools that are in the state, how many of those schools have their facilities at the Community Center down the road? Or do they have their facilities in-house on their campus? But isn't that something to think about? I mean, because we're, we're talking about those fields will be yours if, if we enter into this agreement as it is.
I agree with everything you just said. But I would put this as a position also, it's not just for the seniors. And seniors, I do know they are out there because seniors in my church also go out there. They're out there this morning playing dominoes or something, I got a call. And so I understand that, and we all understand that. And we're not taking, we're not saying we're going to take anything from the school system. They still have those ball fields and everything else. But there's more to activities than just seniors. There are other things that we should be bringing to the county, in that Community Center. We have no other place to hold anything. We don't have the land, we don't have the facilities, and the wellness programs we could be hosting. All that thing, it does not, that's not just a senior citizen, it's just enhancing what we have. And this was brought to us on behalf of the school, I mean, Dr. Williams brought it to us. And my thing, and my thing is that as we move forward, and that's my term always, why not enhance what we build on, just like you said? Build on what we have and make it, make it more enhanceable for all youth, all seniors, anybody. Doesn't matter age or subgroup. Just make sure that what we're doing is not adversely affecting the school system. And when I see this agreement, the agreement was, was written to make sure that does not happen. It's the operation is who is responsible for operating the school system. It's not trying to take anything from anybody. It's just trying to enhance and move forward and have a place for not only seniors but other entities that may have other things they want to enhance. And that, we don't have another building, we just don't. You know, and I've heard, and I'm going to be quiet for, for the other Commissioners and Board members to speak. We don't have facilities for recreation, we just don't. It's the Community Center, that's it. We don't have the land, we don't have the building. And I remember being informed that they tried to find some, some grant money to either build us a facility or take over another facility. That didn't work. So that's all we're saying, that you ask for pros and cons, that's the pro. The con, I don't have a con. Because when I look at this, this agreement that was sent to us, what's the down, what's the downgrade? What is it? You know, what is it? And they may know, and I'm going to ask each one of them to speak up in about 30 seconds, the pros and the cons. Okay? So that's, that's my position. What's the pros and the con? Who is injured in this? And if we don't do anything, who is injured in this? And so that's why we're here today. So who wants to speak next on the Board of Commissioners? Ray, you want to start? I always start at the end and move around.
I'll put you in. First, I certainly want to thank Sally, Ms. Ryan, but I know Sally, so, for enlightening us. It's certainly enlightening me with the figures and the other things. Even though we kind of know, I do, go out there, certainly see and feel the things that go on with the Community Center. And I know what a great deal that Community Center put into itself to make it what it is, even way back, probably during the Swamp Fest. I think maybe that's when, when some things started. So, and, and all of us looking at what is going to happen, we don't know. And we don't know the expansion that may, could occur and, and what buildings or what facilities might exist in the future. So one question I had, when I heard Dr. Riddick, when she began, she said you were contacted by someone from the Board.
Very, Dr. Williams.
In reference to this, and what, one question I had in the very beginning, and I think I know the answer, but just for the sake of, if you will, transparency. How did that start?
That all started with the retirement of Ms. Lulu Yor. And so from, from me just looking at it from a strategic point, a professional point, and a collaborative point, the school system and the county put this Part of Grant together to make it work. And the Part of Grant Agreement didn't, doesn't say who, who operates it. That was to the county at that time. So I don't see anything wrong. You know, I've had people tell me what is wrong with a, why did they do a Part of Grant? Well, that Part of Grant, the school system, they can apply, but they can't submit. So apparently from what I read and how I interpret, and I've got legal counsel here. We don't have facilities for recreation. We just don't. It's the community center. That's it. We don't have the land. We don't have the building. And I remember being informed that they tried to find some, some grant money to either build us a facility or take over another facility. That didn't work. So that's all we're saying, that you ask for pros and cons, that's the pro. The con, I don't have a con because when I look at this, this agreement that was sent to us, what's the down, what's the downgrade? What is it? You know, what is it? And they may know, and I'm going to ask each one of them to speak up in about thirty seconds, the pros and the cons. Okay? So that's, that's my position. What's the pros and the con? Who is injured in this? And if we don't do anything, who is injured in this? And so that's why we're here today. So who wants to speak next on the board of commissioners? Ray, you want to start? I always start at the end and move around.
I'll put you in. First, I certainly want to thank Sally, Ms. Ryan, but I know Sally, so for enlightening us. It's certainly enlightening me with the figures and the other things, even though we kind of know, I do, go out there. Certainly see and feel the things that go on with the community center. And I know what a great deal that the community center put into itself to make it what it is. Even way back, probably during the Swamp Fest. I think maybe that's when, when some things started. So, and, and all of us looking at what is going to happen, we don't know. And we don't know the expansion that may, could occur. And, and what buildings or what facilities might exist in the future. So, one question I had, when I heard Dr. Riddick, when she began, she said you were contacted by someone from the board.
Very, Dr. Williams.
In reference to this, and what, one question I had in the very beginning, and I think I know the answer, but just for the sake of, if you will, transparency. How did that start?
That all started with the retirement of Ms. Lulu York. And so from, from me just looking at it from a strategic point, a professional point, and a collaborative point. The school system and the county put this part-of-grant together to make it work. And the part-of-grant agreement didn't, doesn't say who, who operates it. That was to the county at that time. So I don't see anything wrong with, you know, I've had people tell me what is wrong with, why did they do a part-of-grant? Well, that part-of-grant, the school system, they can apply, but they can't submit. So apparently from what I read and how I interpret, and I've got legal counsel here, is Cleveland Hawkins and Ms. Emily Williams. They wrote this thing and then the county had to submit it. So as far as a, a part-of-grant, I think this is a good thing. I mean, this is something that I could see that we could continue to collaborate on more. Because there was a, I got an idea that I could submit another part-of-grant. You apply for it and then, you know, there's other things down the road that I have visions and, and, and things that we could do for as a county too as well. So that's, that's how it originated. Board of Education said, yeah, that's a good idea. Go talk to Dr. Riddick. And then that's how it started.
Madam Chair, and Dr. Williams, I appreciate, appreciate that, that information as well. And then is it also the fact that the grants sort of coming to an end? Do I understand that?
December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four is when the, the trust fund ends and then it just goes back to, to normal.
Roger. Okay. I just kind of want to get that in so, so we all understood that. And certainly know that at that point, we've got to do something anyway, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, so anyway, that's kind of where I stand. Other than the fact that, uh, I kind of feel neutral about all of it, if you will. Certainly because it's, it's a good facility. It does good things. And do we need to move on to other things? I don't know. And can, and where are our dollars best spent? I think certainly for our citizens and our senior citizens, not just because I'm one of them. But, but also the mere fact, if we look at our figures, that is approaching the upward rise in our senior citizens.
Commissioner Hoffler?
I do think that we, yes, there are programs at the community center for the seniors, but I think it's, there's a lot of enhancement that can be done. Also, there are an age group between school age and seniors that we have missing entirely. And there are programs that they would be interested in. On the exercise programs and the fields we have, I mean, the walking paths. But there are all things, certainly, you know, speakers coming in on the various topics. As you pointed out, we don't have buildings for that. And we could host things like for, you know, information on cancer prevention, cancer, obesity. There are big health problems in this county, how to, about your diet, learning how to eat properly and to help to maintain. There's all those programs we can offer at present time that we could offer. I mean, it's to a certain extent.
I'm confused why we could not offer them.
Well, let me say they have not been offered.
Gotcha.
They have not, but we could.
That's my question. We could offer.
We could offer those. And so I just see it as that we could utilize the building with a variety of activities.
And you know, Board of Commissioners, I agree one hundred percent with you about that. I think that my difficulty with, with this is none of you went to the present director or to Dr. Williams to say, we think things need to be, be done differently. But as soon as you had the opportunity, we heard seniors weren't being representative. This people weren't representative. And to me, I just found that to be dismissive of the people who had been out there. I think if you wanted to have changes, you should have spoken. That's just my two cents. And I said, that equals six cents and I'll stop it right now.
I would just say, I would just say that. I know numerous people approached them about doing the senior silver sneaker programs.
Did you, have you done your research on silver sneakers?
Yes, I have done some research on silver.
Well, I have too. And they don't even have to do it. You could do it if you wanted.
But lots of programs are done by, are offered. They give us heads up. So, but they're all.
I know what you're saying, but I would have joined Silver Sneakers so that I would know exactly.
But a lot of people wouldn't take that initiative. And they were approached by, I know by five people who approached them.
And I concur. I don't disagree with you.
And I'm not being, and I don't mean, listen, things slip through the cracks. I understand.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hoffler. Commissioner Owens?
Well, Sally, I'm glad that you gave us that laundry list because you named some things that I was not aware of. So, so that was good. I'm glad you did that. And, I mean, the things that you spoke about and about, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can start way up, way up here instead of at the ground floor. So that was very good. Glad you shared that with, that affects my opinion, you know. So I would love for the county manager to have a list of the things that you, you know, we're, hopefully we're capturing in the minutes. But just in case, so that we can see that those things don't get omitted. So I think, I think it's a win-win for, for everybody. Yeah. And I don't think there are a lot of cons. I don't think there are any cons. I think there are a lot of pros and I, and I think we've already addressed them.
Commissioner Jones?
Fifteen minutes, right?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I have a lot of cons. Because I use the center more than anybody sitting at these two tables and been involved. And I don't agree with Commissioner Freeman about room for expansion. Because I think that that facility is landlocked and there's not any room for expansion because of it. Would you agree with that, Dr. Williams? So we're, so we're stuck.
If I may interrupt just for the term expansion, also mean land expansion, not necessarily there.
Yeah, there's wetlands behind the facility. So if we take over that facility as we move forward as a community center, we can't build anything. You know, we're going to be spending money on.
Not necessarily there, sir.
I got, but I'm talking about the current location. That's one thing that bothers me. Another thing that bothers me and my buddy Sally, Ryan mentioned it, that I think that the commissioners need to, to think about. You mentioned that, and of course, we've heard Dr. Williams say it, we're the only, he's the only superintendent in the state that, that runs the recreation department. Correct?
That I know of.
That you know of.
For my superintendent colleagues, they.
So, so we, Mr. Byram says one more. So we, we take pride and we just did it sitting behind this table two months ago and doing things differently in Gates County. Not being like others, just like with the Confederate monument across the street. I think that'd be something to brag on when you're at these superintendent conferences. It, look at this. I run a recreation center. And, and one of the biggest things that I look and see the high school principal and the athletic director out back. There's a logistical issue, in my opinion, of what Ms. Ryan just said, because you're connected to the high school property. You've got the principal out there that if something happens now, you, you've just got a logistical issue with kids. With the buildings being used during the daytime by the high school kids, by the P kids. I see them. I, I see them out my window during the day. You've got kids that come through, you know, flying through the parking lot at three-ten every day. Are, are we going to put up a fence between the community center and the school, in the high school? To make sure that, you know, you know, I, I've got a lot of issues with this joint use agreement. But one, one of my main questions is, my first question, you know, Commissioner Owens and Commissioner Riddick are talking about moving forward. But this is a joint use agreement. Right now, the school system is in charge of the community center. The school system board, from my, our last meeting here, and there was a school board member that came up. The school board has not voted to transfer ownership as of today. Is that correct? So y'all have not voted whether you want to transfer it over or not. Okay? So, so that's my first big question. The next one, are there any contracts for the facility currently in place for usage of any softball fields? Any of the rooms that are currently in place or they get used? And if so, for how long? And, and I ask these questions because we're here, we're over here talking about moving forward and signing and working out the logistics. But I don't think you move forward without knowing the specifics.
Well, let me just say this. I think the reason why the board is coming, or is coming to you is that on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, this building and the three acres reverts back to the county. And you're responsible for it. My opinion, and I'm going to say my opinion, would be that the three acres that the county reverted back to the school system. And you look at building a senior center that is not landlocked and that does not have wetlands. That's just my opinion. There are monies out there that are available. I know at one time there was a hundred thousand dollar grant to build and start a senior citizen. I know Lee Riddick was very instrumental in trying to get that, but they were not getting that. I'm the only one that sits on this board that sat in the audience when this agreement was made. Because I ran prior to this being done against Ms. Helen Chaney Jordan. And I sat there. The community center was not designed for senior citizens. It was designed for community recreational activities for the entire county, and that was the main purpose of it. Each board agreed that the school system, being that it was so intertwined between the school using it so much, that it was better for the school system to operate and be in charge of operating the community center. And that's how that all started. Yes, there are, there is a senior, there is a kitchen out there that can be made available. It can be rented. It is a nice kitchen. It was, our grant money was put in and it passed. If I'm not mistaken, there's a daycare type situation going on still out there. That is by application, you know. So, yes, it can be, but the space is limited for what you want to do. It really is limited on what you want to do. You can't build to the right. You can't build to the left. And if you build to the back, you're interfering with the wetlands. And then that presents a problem. So truly, it is a landlocked situation. So we need to work together to come up with the best common use of that facility. And that's how I feel about it.
And to continue, Madam Chair, Mr. Byron made a, made a great point. We, I keep hearing that there's grants, there's grants. So in, in my opinion, and this is my opinion only as one of five. Because of logistical issues of the high school and the location and no room for expansion. Like Mr. Byron just said, Commissioner Freeman. That, that we flip this joint use agreement, let the school board maintain ownership after twenty twenty-four. And, and we light a fire and look for grants to build a new facility that can be used. I mean, I look at this grant, I mean, this joint use agreement and this, we, we want the, a computer lab to be put up. And we got a computer lab right across the street in the library we just built. You know, I'm just, I, I, this, this joint use agreement, I, I, I do not agree with it. Like I said, in my opinion, it's better that we say the school system has it, let them hire someone to fill the seat. Knowing that we would like it to be used in a way to reach out to seniors, to kids programs, and the ones between that Commissioner Hoffler mentioned. And knowing that we're looking for a new facility with, with grant money. And that maybe when we get it ready, then the county could take over the actual community center. And at that point, let the school system keep that building and property for the high school to use. You know, alternative school, ROTC, whatever. And then we build a new community center for all the citizens. That's my opinion, especially knowing that the school board has not even agreed to move forward this, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Chairman Felton, I didn't hear from all of your members. And from you.
I, I've sat in and listened and I paid close attention. And I paid close attention. And how, how many of y'all were in Gates Canyon when this thing was built?
What year was that?
Nineteen ninety-seven.
All right. And how many remember the comments of the people in Gates Canyon when this was built? What were the comments, Ms. Captain?
Speak into the mic.
Wouldn't work.
And it, and why would it not work?
People wouldn't come. People wouldn't use it.
But, but there was another, there was another negativity. And, and I talked to a young man from Duke today about it. And I remember this building and y'all was like, hey, I do remember that. How many of you remember that there were a number of people in Gates Canyon that said they got another federal grant? And they're going to spend federal money and they're going to build something here. And then your federal government is going to leave it sitting and we got to maintain it. How many of y'all remember that as a complaint? And, and I, I think you go here, but when we get down, when the fat lady starts singing, we, we go here. What was me? We got money that we need to spend out there now. It, it has not been well maintained because we in Gates Canyon. Same, same thing I told that young man from Duke today. Gates Canyon is so poor, we can't pay respect. Because we have, for the seventy-five years that I've lived here, done the same thing we always done expecting different results. We have depended on farming being, being, being our redeemer. And farming has continued to grow in dollars and cents they use. And decrease in the number of, of families that are impacted directly by Gates Canyon. Because it has become a, a major business thing and, and a little man can't survive. So, so here we are. We've got this building. And Mr. James, what you said sounds great, but we haven't maintained that. If we get, if we got a grant for a million, five million or a hundred million from the federal government and, and we build a building, what are we going to do with it? We, we, we can put it to use and we can use it for thirty or forty years as we have this one. But sooner or later, somebody get to put some money back in it. And we, I don't think there's anybody in this room that can identify a source to come up with the money to, to, to do the maintenance. On what we got made. Because we struggle in the school system name to do the maintenance that's needed because we don't have enough money to do it. And, and it ends up costing us more because we postponed the maintenance. So I, I mean, I understand what, what everybody's saying. And, and Mr. James, I, I respect you. Your idea, it sounds great. But when we haven't been, when, when we haven't been able to keep up with what we got made, how we going to keep up with something further? That's, as Sally says, my two cents were.
Well, what exactly maintenance needs to be done at this time? What exact maintenance needs to be done? Have you all been out and assessed that or are, are folks assessed it?
School or is maintaining?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Well, it's tricky. We maintain it, but you're in charge.
We own it, but you are maintaining.
Do what, Ms.?
Dr. Williams?
Right. And they, and they have worked on that multiple times.
Dr. Williams, can you, can you speak to that?
And maybe hot water? Was there also an issue with the?
The, according to the grant, the part-of-grant. The, the county has told the Board of Education to operate it and to run it. But like Chairman Felton says, to operate it and to run it, we need the support financially from the county commissioners. So as far as maintaining the facility, it goes back to what you said with, with the money that we need to maintain and facilitate the, the building. I think that's what it comes down to.
Please, please, I do not want anybody to think I'm sitting here for the fund. I'm not. The fund is coming back and all of us, but we're four counties and we failed the plan. And, and, and our plan failed. It, it's, it's not planning, it's not planning is a failed plan.
Failed plan, plan failed.
That's why, that's why we're all, that's how we got it.
Chairman, I'm just confused. Would you tell me the failure? I understand that we're here right now trying to decide what our vision is and where we're going. But I hear you saying. But I hear you saying that it's a failure. And I'm not sure what is a failure about community center.
I'm saying that other people can read that into this, that we think or that I'm wanting to thank the commissioners, that y'all can give us enough money. Y'all did the best you could, but what's ahead?
And we have got one of the best disabled children's playground in northeast of North Carolina. It is a Trillium Playground and it is one of the best. I challenge you to go anywhere within the next hundred miles and find one that is as nice as that one. So we do have some good things out there. There have been good things done. And I'm sure that the county participated or had to with our joint agreement so that some of those things could be done. My, probably my biggest concern is in the memorandum of understanding where it talks about maintenance of the property and operation. My concern is we have a group of people at the high school who maintain those athletic fields as if they were priceless. I would dare say that there are people not out there every single day doing what needs to be done. My question then says, because in this new agreement, you're going to be responsible for the maintenance and operation. Are you going to do what our fellows have been doing? Or do we need to work on that so that they're still doing it? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I completely understand. I completely understand. The baseball field in particular, and softball fields probably also, but particularly the baseball field is immaculate. It needs to stay that way. The, if a different person took that field over, they could do a better job, as good a job or a lesser job of it. We don't need to lose that personal involvement.
Exactly.
For whoever's caring for it now, that needs to be, those are the kind of things that that need to be understood, you know? We have a document here and it doesn't really address what you're saying. And I'm not saying the document needs to address it. But overall management of it needs to understand those little, those little things that mean a lot. And.
And I think those have to be.
I agree, I agree.
They cannot be something that we are agreeing on as a group. That will not work. It must be in paper, specific. And the people that it's going to impact, like our high school principal, our high school athletics, they need to have input into this.
Also, we need to know, and we need to know where the boundary lines are. The boundary line.
Exactly.
Because some of those fields, I still think are school property. We don't know. Because when it turns, it was a rectangle, whatever turn, wherever it's made, it's got to be school property.
Let me, let me, let me interrupt everyone. I'm enjoying the conversation, I'm enjoying the collaboration and the debate. But I'm going to have to stop this in about five minutes because at five thirty, we have a regular board meeting. And I've got to make sure, best I can, we get started at five thirty. We have to dismantle all of this. So Chairman Felton, where are we? Do you want to go back? Just turn, yeah.
Personally, I, and I'm speaking for y'all, whether you speak up if you disagree. I think this is more of a preliminary meeting based on what we've heard. And I don't think any of us are ready to make a decision today. I think we need to look at it. And one point I want to make right while I got the microphone, that y'all may not be aware of, is Mr. Harold has been one dedicated servant to those fields. And it has not been a five-day-a-week job. He's been out there on weekends and he gets out there and he doesn't care about the baseball players and point and shoot and say, y'all do this. He's the man on the dumb end of the rake and making it happen. And he has done a tremendous job. He has been a tremendous asset to the schools and to the county.
So what I'm hearing is you want to table this, go back and look at it again with those, like the plot that you, the plat that you showed us, all the discussion we have, and come back one more time. One more time.
Together.
Together, yeah. One more time, just have one more joint meeting. And at that meeting, we decide what we're going to do as far as who will operate the community center. So we'll look at your calendar, you look at your calendar, we'll look at our calendar, our commissioners, and we'll set a date certain, give us a time, probably next month, that'll give us a time for your attorney, our attorney, your board, the Board of Commissioners to sit and talk and get this straight. But I want to, I want to say this before I close because I have to close. You know, we could sit here for the next two years with everything that everybody thinks. We have to decide one thing and one thing only, who's going to operate this center? All the minutia, all the, all the, all the things we know we have to do, like the ball fields and this, that is day to day. This not in this. What I'm going to say as chair of this Board of Commissioners is, whatever we do, we're never going to do harm to the school system. Never. That's in here, it's prioritized. We know about the ball fields, I've talked about it. I may not have been out there, but I do my homework. And we are not going to do anything to adversely affect the school system or the kids. But we also have to think about the citizens, all the citizens of this county that pay the tax money to run that community center. And what I'm hearing is they want enhancements. I know what we do. I know, I've got senior citizens go out there, but we can build on the future. I thank everybody for coming. So let's go back to our neutral corners. Neutral corners and work for the good of the citizens, not personal interest, not the school board interest, and not the Board of Commissioners' interest, but the citizens of Gates County. And when we meet again, we are going to put this to bed. You either going to, it's binary, yes or no. Makes sense? With that, I'm going to close the meeting for the Board of Commissioners of this joint meeting. Mr. Felton?
Do we entertain a motion? A motion on second, we adjourn, Mr. Byron, how do you vote? Chief Thug, Mr. Byron? We are adjourned.
We are adjourned, we're taking a five-minute break so we can get ready for our five-thirty meeting.
Commissioner Riddick, we don't think.